All right, this regular March meeting of the Luray Town Council will now come to order. Will you stand and join me in a moment of silence, please? I'll ask councilman Head to the leaders.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Vickers?
Here.
I'm sorry, Mayor Goffmeyer.
Here, we're both here.
Ms. Lillard?
I'm here.
Mr. Shiro?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
And Mr. Webb?
Here.
All right, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda? Coming down, we'll move on, consent agenda. Mr. Vickers?
I'll see if I can get it right tonight. I moved approved the following consent agenda. The minutes of the regular council meeting of February fourteenth, 2022, the minutes of the work session, February twenty-second, 2022, the financial records ending February twenty-eighth, 2022, and accounts payable totaling $206,2,403.40.
Second.
Danielle? No, that's end discussion. Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry again. All right, Mr. Timothy Ramey? Ramey, nice to have you this evening.
Yeah, I just take a minute every time.
If you will give us your name and address for our record.
My name is Timothy Ramey, I live at twenty-three Wallace in the town of Luray. I just want to come and say before about the last year and a half, the neighbors at number twenty-five Wallace have been somewhat unsatisfied with neighbors. I've been working with Chief Cook here on multiple issues with that place, but currently there are eight people living in that house, three adult couples, which is, it being zoned R1 is not permissible per the zoning ordinance, and I'd just like to ask the town to enforce the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramey. All right, anybody else? Steve, we have any emails, letters, anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Powell Markowitz, Airport Authority. Powell, thank you for being with us. Will you give us, we know your name, will you give us our address, please?
My address is two seventy Circle View, Ray, Luray.
Thank you, Powell.
Good to be here, good to see everybody. I haven't been here for a while, so. I thought I'd-
We've missed you.
I know you have. I thought I'd start off with just a brief report on what we got going out there, and then get to the matter that we have here this evening. So about one year ago, Aircraft Maintenance Solutions finished their hangar, and they are currently working, they have five full-time employees now, and Mr. Kraus told me he wished he had twice the space, so he's been very busy and been very successful so far.
Can't you fix that for him?
Hmm?
Can't you fix that for him?
We, we, we don't have a lot of room left to build, but anyway, he's doing very well. We broke ground about two weeks ago for another hangar, and this hangar will be similar in size to Aircraft Maintenance Solutions, and it will house an avionics mechanic. And that mechanic has been working some at the airport, doing private work for one individual, but he'll move over there and he'll hang out his shingle, and he has a couple of the people that work with him, so I can see a couple, couple of jobs that will materialize there, too, so we're pleased with that. Our ACIP, our Capital Improvement Plan, right now we have three projects on the slate, and they're a little challenging because none of these projects are, there's, at the time we budgeted, there was no federal money available. So I'm going to run through those three projects and then bring you up to speed on where we are as far as financing the local share. So the first project is we want to build another eighteen-unit T-hanger building. And you know, in '08, we built, we built two T-hanger buildings that house twenty-eight aircraft. In that building, those two buildings have been rented the entire time, and of course the rents from that pay the loan. We paid about $2.1 million for those two buildings, and the state gave us a half-million-dollar grant dollars, and we borrowed the balance from the USDA. And that's been a very successful project. So now we want to add another eighteen units. I have thirty-two people on the waitlist for hangars, and what we're going to do, and I've talked to, I've talked to the first eighteen that we want in there, obviously we want people in there that have aircraft that fly and burn fuel, but those people are going to write us a check for one year's rent in advance before we ever start construction. I'll have eighteen tenants available for that building. So that project, I received a grant from the Department of Aviation this past summer for $75,000 to design and do the site work, the site design and the building design for that project. So we have that project almost ready to go to bid. So once we bid it, we'll know, I anticipate that the project's going to come in about 1.1, 1.2 million dollars, and the state will give us something in the neighborhood of $300,000 as grants, a grant toward this project, and the balance we will borrow from USDA. And so I've been working with the USDA on all these projects and have a budget, and they're looking at, right now, of course, we don't know what interest rates are going to do, but once they can get us locked in, if we could lock in soon, the rate would be about two and a quarter for forty-year fixed rate, so that's, so that's what we're anticipating. The second project is a fuel farm, and I'm still not sure how much money I can get. DEQ and EPA requires us to build a containment facility to put our fuel tanks and that sort of thing, so I anticipate some good grant dollars from the feds and the state on that, but we're working on that. So that could possibly cost us maybe $100,000 local share. So you see, we're, we need to borrow a little bit of money. The third project is the terminal building. Now, that's been the most challenging project, and it's been on the books. We did the site, the terminal study back in 2009 that determined the size of the building and that sort of thing. And our engineers, they estimate that that building will cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million. So this past year, I received a $57,000 grant from the state to design the site, and I got $144,000 grant to design the building. So that is in process right now. We, so in doing a budget and working with the USDA, I budgeted the money for the, for the term, for the T-hangers, which, roughly a million dollars. I budgeted about $100,000 for the fuel farm, and then I budgeted this $400,000 we need for the, for the terminal building. And the way my budget works is the rents from all the original twenty-eight units and the next eighteen units, the rents from those units will more than cover the debt service as we go forward. So I did get some good news just last week, that normally the FAA would not participate in terminal buildings, they don't, that had to be state grants. However, our government seems to be on a spending spree, God bless them, so the FAA has set aside now $5 billion, that billion with a B, just for terminal buildings. So I actually completed this grant application and sent it, signed it, sent it in today. And it's, if you read the requirements, it's like they wrote it for our terminal building. They said if you have a building that's in ill repair and not handicapped accessible and not energy efficient and such, so I feel strongly that we will be able to get some money from this. If, if we do get money for that, then that's, they'll pay 95% of the cost of the terminal, for the new terminal. And the state, of course, they're excited about it because they're going to save 1.6 billion dollars, and they, they would pay the additional 5%, so knock on wood, we'll get a terminal building at no cost. And obviously, then I'll have to borrow less money, so. But in the process of budgeting with the USDA, they, our plan was, of course, to refinance that original loan. Well, they said after it went to Richmond, they reviewed our application, they said we can't refinance it for you because you're not the borrower, all right? So when we built those hangars, the Airport Authority was just an advisory commission, so it ended up the EDA borrowed the money, and we were, we collect the rent, send it to the county, the county's a financial agent, and the EDA is the borrower. So USDA asked us if we would please refinance that. So they were, the county was working on their, on doing some refinancing, and we worked with Botkin Rose, Daniel Laro, if you guys have worked with him at Botkin Rose, and he, he did the RFP, and of course, that brings us to this proposal we have this evening, this resolution to refinance that building. We, when we sent out the RFP, we got six, we got six proposals back, and the Bank of the James was the best rate, and that's, it's a five-year interest-only loan, and it'll get us up to when the, then the USDA will take it all out. So that, plus, the good thing there is that the debt service on this interest only is going to be about $2,400 a month, and we're collecting about $8,400 a month in rents, so we'll be able to accumulate about $6,000 a month that we'll put toward the reserve because USDA will require a reserve. So that's what we're looking for. The authority has approved this resolution, and of course, then we, you, we have the, our charter says we have to come to the county, county, so the county approved it last week, so we're asking for your approval on that this evening. And I'll be glad to answer questions if you, if you have any.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Markowitz?
Sounds like a good plan. Makes sense.
I know over the years that money has flowed, since I've been around for fifteen years, you know, they're set, they're set aside every year, as you've explained over the years, for these developments of rural airports, and I would just kind of make a statement of, of all the entities in the community that have really gone out and moved forward and progressed, really has been the airport, and you're a big reason because you're a pretty good accountant of money, as I understand it. And I don't know what they would do without you, you know, and it sounds like it's, it's really, you know, I know when you first came in for that, that first terminal, and you know, it's kind of a, you kind of sold that to the council to a certain degree, and it looked like it has worked out just as you had envisioned, and you're kind of back now with sort of the same idea that you're expanding and that there's, there's need and space for this. I do think it's a part of, maybe the ordinary citizen doesn't always understand, but it is a part of kind of economic development, and there are a lot of activity and jobs out there as it becomes more of a, you know, a regional hub, and I think you're, you're a big part of that, so appreciate, and Kenny and everybody out there, that.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. We're, we're, we're very proud of what we've accomplished out there, and my, I would like, before I go to that big airport in the sky, I'd love to see this, I'd love to see this place operate into black, and if I can, if I can continue getting these grant dollars and everything works out, then I can see that down the road. There's, there's light at the end of the tunnel. So the airport is a big economic, it generates a lot of economic activity. Like Mayor Press Graves used to say, it's kind of like the greenway and the sidewalk, sidewalks and the streetlights, you know, it's, you're not going to see an income item on the budget, but it, but it does its part, you know, so. Thank you, sir.
So do we need a motion?
Do we have a resolution?
Yeah.
It's on your agenda tonight.
Yeah, they have that resolution today.
Just out of curiosity, those eighteen, the folks that you've got on hook for coming in, is that a one-year lease, or how does that, what is the commitment for those hangars?
We normally do a three-month lease. We don't, we don't want to, you know, there, we have such a demand for those hangars, and we don't want to have problems. I mean, there's people come and go, you know, airplanes can, you know, they have them, they sell them, they move and that sort of thing, so we initially do, now, these will initially be one, these people will pay a one-year rent upfront, and then if they leave, of course, then we could refund them the money, but we, we won't have any trouble renting these things. We just want that commitment from that first eighteen, so, and that's, that's kind of the standard procedure with the airports around the state, that, you know, when they're building new units, they want a little money upfront, so. And the majority of those people will stay a year, but if they want to leave them, you know, we, we got people lined up that'll, like I say, we got thirty-two on the waiting list right now, and more calls on a weekly basis, so. We're, we, the demand is there, I mean, there's so, there are no hangars available in, in a fifty, hundred-mile radius, there are just no hangars for rent, so.
Counsel, any more discussion, questions?
Thanks, Powell, thanks for all you've done.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Powell.
All right, are you, were you all going to put that, your vote on that this evening? It'll come up on there, okay, all right, we appreciate, I'd like to leave Mr. Steve here, I, yeah.
This, this is our audited statement, I didn't want to hand it out this evening, but you can have those, pass those around to those guys. If you need some more copies, let me know. All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Powell. And as already been said, thank you for all you've done.
Yes, sir.
I think Lincoln said you're one of the reasons, I think you are the reason for the airport we have, but.
It's a, it's an addiction I have. I really do enjoy doing it, and it's, it's certainly been, it's satisfying to be able to go after that stuff again. We've gotten over $15 million in grant dollars over the years, so it's, it's fun to do.
How many, you said fifteen million?
Over 15 million, yeah.
There's a lot of things that happened after all the years.
All right, Ms. Elliott, LDI. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, good to see you guys. March fifth, we had our Mardi Gras event downtown, and it went very well, we had a great turnout, I saw lots of people carrying packages from our merchants and dining and smiles on everyone's faces, so I think these little things like this are going to continue, we're going to continue to see those to grow. We are having a work session tomorrow evening, our board, we're going to be working on a redesign of our website because that needs some updating, and now that we've got our board stabilized and kind of have our ducks in a row, we're going to be getting, making those improvements. We're also working on two fundraisers, we're going to be nailing the details down on that, so we're going to be rolling that out here real soon, and I think everyone's going to be pretty excited about what we've come up with. The hanging baskets I got with Jennifer, she and I got, we've gotten those ordered, so they're going to be coming, I think it's Riverside Nursery, is that who we do? I believe that's who we do the business with, and so they'll be coming here soon for, to adorn our downtown. The hen house, as most of you know, has moved to Main Street, they were up behind the Domino's building, and they are now on Main Street, they are going to be opening within the coming weeks, that's going to be an exciting addition to downtown, and I think it's going to be great for them. And then the, I spoke with the folks at IBR, and it's my understanding in about two months, they're going to start working on the Browns building, and they're going to start with working on the facade, the outside exterior, that type of thing, so that's exciting, that we're going to start seeing some things happening, and I think that's going to be great for that section of town. And then the only other thing I have is I want to introduce, because I forgot the last time she was here, to introduce Paula Kibler. Paula is the new LDI Board President. She needs no introduction, but, you know, and unless you have something for me, that kind of wraps it up.
Counsel, anybody? Paula, are we having, the, excuse me, are we having the, either one of you, are we having the chicken thing, this chicken, was it chicken chow?
Chicken chow.
Yeah.
They did away with that, I want to say maybe two years ago, Bill, am I saying?
He was elected chicken mayor.
Well, I'm trying to get rid of that.
Yeah, yeah.
My third term is chicken mayor, I'd like to have somebody else have it.
But I mean, we could probably come up with something for you, Jerry, you know, we'll, I'll work on that, maybe we can do something with party chicken, well, that's not downtown, can't use them, we'll find somebody downtown to fry you some chicken. Yeah, yeah, but no, we haven't been doing that for a while.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, our fried chicken chow down was supposed to be 2020, and then COVID hit and we went downtown.
Thank you, Bill, thank you. All right, Counsel, if y'all remember, a couple meetings ago, we decided to rename North Alley in honor of one of our long-serving town councilmen, someone who'd have been with us thirty-two years, he served as town council, he served as vice mayor, he did seen a lot, did a lot during those thirty-two years, he saw the replacement of the Main Street Bridge, a lot of the advancements at the airport, served on the Airport Authority. He, I know he worked on Imagination Station because I think I was there with him, and has seen, of course, not only Imagination Station, but all the improvements over there at Ralph Dean Park, he's been a part of the business community like forever, I don't know how many years. He's seen upgrades to our wastewater treatment plants, he's helped celebrate the town's bicentennial in 2012, and of course, the, the construction of the new Lord Fairfax Community College campus. So of course, you all know I'm talking about Leroy Lancaster, and we have renamed North Alley Lancaster Lane. You have to put it up yourself, but I can tell you where you can rent the tools. Leroy, can we get a picture?
Yeah.
Let's get everybody, let's get everybody. Well, let somebody else do it there. Steve?
Yes, sir.
Never missed a beat. Yeah, never missed a beat.
In thirty-two years, he never missed a beat. Leroy, thank you, congratulations, and I guess some wonderful work. We wish you and your family all the best, certainly. Okay, looks like someone has brought, I broke my glasses, anyway, someone has, oh, I'm really in trouble now, someone, someone has brought a lot of friends with him tonight, and I think they're all here to help recognize John Schaefer, his achievements in the community. John, will you come forward, please?
So I hardly know where to start, doesn't Johnny have? Go way back, gosh, high school together, and, of course, he's about ten years older than we all are. No, we were, you know, Johnny was the schoolkeeper for the basketball team during those great , we were years, late sixties, early seventies, and after he left, I feel bad for him, not as well, but I, I do remember. Winded up on the same floor, at Virginia Tech, right, the third floor, Richard, of course, I was on the-
He didn't last.
I was on the-
Congratulations on your ACC championship, by the way, but we ended up on the same floor, and then, of course, later we remodeled a house, and we read, lived in it for several years, so remember Johnny, and of course, been very much involved in the Chamber of Congress and all that, so. Johnny, we thank you for everything you've done for your community, you've also served on the Planning Commission since 2014, is that right? We do have a proclamation, Mr. Burks, would you mind reading that, please?
Absolutely. Whereas John Schaefer began his career at the Luray Caverns in 1966, parking cars and affixing cardboard cavern signs to bumpers, and whereas Mr. Schaefer progressed from the parking lot to working as a tour guide and ticket sales, and then leading the cavern's marketing and guest relations efforts, and whereas Mr. Schaefer became a leader in the national marketing industry, including serving on the National Tour Association, president of the Shenandoah Valley Travel Association, and the U.S. Travel Association Government Affairs Committee, and whereas Mr. Schaefer has found time to serve his community as president of the Luray Rotary Club, chairman of the Luray Page County Chamber of Commerce Tourism Council, and the official Virginia Tech Hokies game statistician, and whereas Mr. Schaefer has served the town of Luray on the town's planning commission since 2014, and whereas Mr. Schaefer has announced his retirement from the Luray Caverns effective December 31st, 2021. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and members of town council of the town of Luray hereby express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for Mr. Schaefer's dedication and commitment to the Luray Caverns and the town of Luray, congratulate him on his, on the occasion of his retirement, and wish him the best and continued success in his retirement and future endeavors.
The members of the planning commission have for you, I think most of them are here. Johnny, would you like to say anything?
We appreciate John being on the planning commission. We can always count on his steady, thoughtful questions and contributions to discussion at our meetings. We appreciate being on the commission since 2014, and while I have just a moment, I also want to thank the mayor and town council members for each of our commission members. We have a very representative group of citizens in the town of Luray, and we don't usually disagree very much, but if we do, we take the vote, and we go on to the next issue, and we work through all the things that we need to, so we appreciate John and each of our planning commission members.
Any other commission members? Again, congratulations, thank you for all you've done for our community.
You know, coming from the council and the town that I grew up in, a town that I've worked every day of my career in, this is very special, unexpected, but very meaningful, thank you very much, all of you.
Open that thing up so we can see. Ready? Got it.
Congratulations. All right, Mr. Burks? All right, Mr. Burke, Dean Park Field Use Agreements.
Actually, if we could go back to the first item, we still need a vote from Council for the approval of the proclamation for Mr. Schaefer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I have a motion. I move that Town Council approve the proclamation of recognition of John Schaefer as presented and we wish him a long, wonderful, happy retirement.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Ron Bickers?
Yes.
Jerry Shiro?
Yes.
Julie Sowers?
Yes.
Jason Pettit?
Yes.
Lynn Webb?
Yes.
Stephanie Lillard?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Burke, how about the proclamation? I told you I broke my glasses, the Dean Park Field Use Agreement.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider approval of the field use equipment and maintenance agreements between the town and county of Page Recreation Department and between the town and the Shenandoah Valley Lacrosse League for both of their use of town fields and equipment.
Counsel, any questions?
No, I think we discussed it. It seems to be everything that we discussed in the agreement. I'll move that Town Council approve the field use equipment and maintenance agreement between the town and county of Page Recreation Department and between the town and the Shenandoah Valley Lacrosse League as presented and further authorize the town manager to execute the agreements.
Second.
Any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
And we've heard from Mr. Markowitz with the Airport Authority Resolution. We need a motion for that unless there's more discussion.
Yeah, I'll move that the Town Council approve and adopt the Luray Page County Airport Authority's Refinings and Resolution as presented and further authorize the Mayor to execute the resolution.
Any more discussion? Danielle?
Jerry Shiro?
Yes.
Julie Sowers?
Yes.
Jason Pettit?
Yes.
Ron Bickers?
Yes.
Lynn Webb?
Yes.
Stephanie Lillard?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, ARPA Revenue Recovery Funding Designation.
Yes, sir. Council has requested to consider the approval of the designation of the town's American Rescue Plan Act allocation of a little over $5 million as standard allowance, formerly known as Revenue Recovery Replacement, as permitted by the Department of Treasury in the February 28th, 2022 Compliance and Reporting Guidance State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Document. Designation of the town's allotment must be made by April 30th, 2022 and would allow the town to greatly reduce our reporting requirements and minimize, hopefully minimize the need for significant outside assistance in reporting.
Does it matter if we've already allocated certain funds a certain way?
No, because going through with this designation, all of those funds still would fall under that, so.
I, I guess at some point, we still need to, you know, not tonight, but I don't think we have to rush. But obviously, it looks like now April 30th is, we need to have this sort of figured out, is that what we're?
No, sir. April 30th is simply when we have to notify the state that we are electing to go with that requirement. We anticipate that the second round of funding should come in before July. We don't know that for certain. There's not been any, any formal notification when the next funding will come in. So no, sir, there is no specific requirement on the part of the Town Council to determine future use. So this is simply a reporting requirement of April 30th that if we, if Council wanted to have individual usage, it would complicate our reporting requirements by having Council elect to go with the Revenue Recovery. It simply says this is what we're using it for. It minimizes the regulations. We still have to follow the certain prohibited requirements, but it gives you greater flexibility in, in the use.
May Counsel, any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll move the Town Council approve the designation of the town's full allotment of ARPA funding as standard allowance for Revenue Recovery Replacement as presented.
Seconded.
Any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, Arbor Day Proclamation.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider approval of the 2022 Arbor Day Proclamation for the town of Luray. The town will be celebrating Arbor Day on Saturday, April 23rd at 1:00 PM at Lake Arrowhead.
Any discussion on that? No, this is controversial, any discussion. Let's have a motion.
I move we adopt the 2022 Arbor Day Proclamation Resolution as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, FY 2022, 2023 Tax Rate Advertisement.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider approval of advertising for public hearing to adjust the FY 2022, 2023 tax rates. Staff is requesting Council to consider advertising, restoring the, the real estate tax rate from 26.7 to mils to, to 29 mils, to increase the meals and beverage tax rate from four to five percent, to increase the transient occupancy tax rate from five to six percent and to increase the cigarette tax rate from 15 cents per pack to 20 cents per pack. Council does not need to approve any of these. It's simply to give you all some opportunity to evaluate our residents' response to any and all of these increases. Staff are requesting Council's consideration to advertise for all of these. As we are developing the, the FY 2022, 2023 budget, we are running into greater uncertainty about a number of items, specifically fuel and maintenance costs for vehicles associated with oil. We are planning to include a 35% increase in all of those expenses based on the current costs that we anticipate will continue for the foreseeable future. As well as, and I'll defer to, to Mr. Crisman, the town put forward a bid, bid request for the, the West Lou Sanitary Lift Station. And we had unexpected results from that, which we believe will continue to go forward on a number of our construction projects.
Yes, sir.
Into every life, little Mr. Johnny Raincloud must descend. So that's my job for this evening. Sorry, folks, with all the great things that we've done and talked about. We received four bids for the Luray Landing Sewer Pump Replacement Station. The latest engineer's estimate was done six months ago. And it was for $612,000 and change. And I had budgeted roughly $675,000 for that project. All four bids came back in excess of $1 million. We were plus or minus 5% on all four. And if you throw out the highest bid and the lowest bid, which was declared non-responsive for a semittal area, the middle two bids were within $3,000 of each other. So we fully expect this to be, while $400,000 increase is tough to fathom, when you add, say, 130 line items in a construction proposal, when you add anywhere from 40 to 100% to every one of those line items, when you end up at the bottom line, it's a big number. And looking around the construction industry, VDOT has not issued any of its signed contracts yet this spring because they are rapidly reevaluating fuel costs, freight costs. Asphalt costs may increase somewhere between 80 to 100% just because of the oil it takes to pave. You know, we're looking at even our own refuse cost. Waste management is increasing our rates 7%. So we're going to have to absorb that in some way or shape or form. And if we can't absorb it, we're going to have to increase that rate to our, to our users. The roundabout was tentatively awarded, but the contract hasn't been issued yet to a local contractor for construction. I think it's because they're waiting to see what's going to happen with construction costs. The Memorial Drive Corridor Improvement Project is slated to go out to bid advertisement for bid later this week. That project probably has a, well, it's tough for me to say what the budget would be right now. What it should be, it should be less than $2 million. What it'll actually be, we have no idea until those bids come back in. So that's a revenue sharing project for which we're, you know, we're responsible for 50% of that money. So even today, we had a meeting with the line marking contractor. You know, we're going to have to start going to every other year or every third year on some of our work in locality because we just can't afford the cost of yellow paint primarily and the fuel surcharges that we're going to get from that vendor. You know, we only get a certain amount of maintenance money and if I get outside of that, essentially what we're seeing in a nutshell is that the buying power of the dollar is roughly 50% of what it was two years ago. So any project, even a fixed asset, buying a truck or a piece of equipment, they're already up 30 to 35% easily. But any construction project where there's a timeline, those contractors are going to respond to that timeline as a risk item and they're going to increase their bids accordingly to respond to that risk. So we think that's a lot of what happened with the sewer package plan out here and the pump station, is that due to the unknowns of being able to get delivery of materials and what you're going to pay for those materials and then what you're going to pay to freight those materials in and then how long it's going to take to get them, a lot of people are just hedging their bets. And it's a big number when you add it all up. And it, it's going to impact every single thing that we do. So I think adding a contingency for those critical line items is probably going to be prudent on our behalf moving forward. But just keep in mind that for something like ARPA where we had $5 million and that sounds like a ginormous number, but in actual spending power, it may be as low as two and a half million bucks. So anyway, sorry to be Johnny Raincloud on such a wonderful night when we have Mr. Lancaster here and Mr. Schaefer here, but. I'm sure there won't be any questions until, until later, until later when you beat me in my office, but that's okay.
Thank you, Brian. We, I think we all understand it's, it's happening all around us. All right.
So what are we going to do on the, what's your thoughts on the project?
Well, we, we declared one bid that are non-responsive because they didn't submit a full package. And then the other bid, of course, is all public knowledge, it's out there now. So Waco Incorporated was declared non-responsive today. LCW, Lance Construction out of Winchester, was the high bid at 1.187. The two middle bids, Marion and Patterson, and you probably know about Patterson down Fredericksburg. Patterson was the apparent low bidder and, you know, their total number is still, total cumulative of the 1.174, their project bid was 1.110. So, you know, our initial, the initial allocation under ARPA was $530,000. So we will need to decide what, Counsel, you know, will need to decide a good direction for me to go in. I'm okay doing whatever. I think that, you know, the good news is we will start to see, due to recent developments, we'll probably start to see some additional incomes coming in in our water and sewer facility fees, especially out in the western end of Luray. Those monies are earmarked specifically for facility infrastructure improvement projects just like this. So it may be that, that we're able to obtain windfall there and get enough there to make up the difference. The only part, problem is, you know, trying to piece and part things. A lot of times when you piece and part, the overall price at the end of the day is higher than the initial price if you just gave it to somebody to do right out of gate. So, and that's what our engineers are talking about now. Yeah, we could potentially go out and buy all the equipment now up front, but things aren't getting any cheaper the longer we wait. And we still have to go out and find a contractor that's willing to put that stuff in the ground. By the time they do that with their risk additives and their markups and their contingencies for rock, we may end up looking at more than 1.11 million, you know, total cumulative when it's done. So we don't have a lot of options. This is one particular station that does not have the lifespan that we need. This is not an expansion. This is just a flat-out replacement. And the Smith and Lovell's pump station that was there was pretty rough 10 years ago. It hasn't gotten any better. We band-aided it along as far as we can. You know, due to the depth of this station and the surrounding sewer lines, we went basically forced to go with a suction lift design to get a suction lift where your operators and your motors and everything are up on the surface where they can be worked on and you're not 30 feet into the ground, you know, working in confined spaces. If this was a shallow installation, switch over to slide pumps, that would be my number one recommendation. But we just don't have that luxury in this particular site. So everything comes through this site, just so you know.
Where, where exactly is that at?
It's right at the bottom of General Drive. It's right down past the law offices. So McDonald's, Burger King, Walmart, Food Lion, West Lou Subdivision, the Luray Meadows Apartment Complex, the Lord Fairfax Community College and all of the town homes going into Luray Landing, all of them come through this pump station. So this is kind of a, what has been a critical piece of infrastructure is now almost become irreplaceable in terms of its value to our systems.
And what do, what do they anticipate those townhouses? I know they came and got permits for, was it 2023?
I think it's 28 total now, according to Mr.
28 total individual units?
To start, out of the initial 44.
They want to start those soon?
Orton is talking about starting and getting building permits.
Thirty-two now, isn't it?
Yeah, thirty-two, thirty-three.
Four more, that's right.
Four more today.
Thirty-two.
So that's, that's a facility of, what, 5,000 toward sewer each one?
Correct, but in addition to that, there's also the Luray Landing Special Construction Infrastructure Fee that is $1,717 per permit. So in addition to the normal facility fee, there's also that fee. So, and that was earmarked primarily, three quarters of that was aimed toward the sewer facility improvement. One quarter of that was aimed at our water improvement model to out there on the west end. So it may be that this is happening, that part of the equation is happening at a good time for us. But if you're asking for my recommendation, it would be to take what we've allocated from ARPA and consider a little bit more and then potentially use these earmarked, go ahead and have Counsel earmark these incoming facility fees along with the facility fees for sewer that we have on the books right now toward this station replacement.
And we anticipate they'll, they'll just hand us a check for that? I mean, all.
They're kind of required to.
You expect that in the next few months or?
Probably, they have within 10 days of the date of the zoning permit being issued to pay that $1,717. And then in order to get their water turned on, you got to pay the water and sewer facility fees. So within the next several months, those monies should be coming in. At least the facility fee monies will be coming in, trickle-in fee. The special fee will come in, probably all along some because like you were saying, we have 32 applications right now and 32 permits to issue, so.
So if we'd put another quarter million in, maybe we'd have another, or three, four hundred thousand in and we could maybe get the rest of it from the facility fees potentially?
I think that that's right. And the other thing that we have to think about too is that Luray Meadows, the apartment complex has only paid us 25% of the water and sewer facility fees to date. So they still owe us the remaining 75% for those 52 units that are going in out there. So that's another significant facility fee, infrastructure payment that we would expect to see somewhere around middle of this year. So I think that using a combination of those resources, I did check with the revolving loan fund. Number one, the money's not there. Number two, it'd be very doubtful that we could use it for this particular type of project, so. And especially in light of the water and wastewater influence that's coming out through ARPA, the state's pretty hesitant to let go of 0% money for something that you could use your allocations for.
And I think we should. I mean, I, I agree. It's, it's a hard, it's a hard pill to swallow, but I don't think setting on it's going to be to our advantage. I think we need to make the difference up with the ARPA funding and, and then recoup it with some of the facility fees and get it going because I'm afraid it's not going to get any cheaper. I don't think it will get any cheaper.
It's not going to get any cheaper. We're, we've already been implementing bypass plans because the station's in such a condition that we're just afraid that it's going to fail before we get it replaced. So doing the pipe around and then completing construction and then switching over, you know, a little night, one night is going to be the ideal scenario. switch over, you know, in the middle of night one night is going to be the ideal scenario.
Then you're in an emergency situation. It's going to cost you even more to.
Correct, because then we're paying significant amounts of overtime. We're paying night and weekend and evening and holiday work. So, the bill just goes up. And, you know, ultimately your guys' decision, I would, under normal circumstances, in a normal world, not Bizarro world that we're living in right now, I would reject all of these and go back to add. Maybe do, there's not much value engineering I can do on a job like this. So, but just given that vast difference, that, that would be cause for me to just deny them all and, and start over because something obviously went wrong. In this day and age, though, it doesn't appear that that's happened. It appears that this is the, without sounding old and used, the new normal. This is the new construction normal for us, which is unfortunate.
Well, I think as a decision, we need to move on.
I'd like to ask one more thing too, and I don't want to make your dark cloud any darker. Something I found out in the last week or two, and this, just like the input or the answer here.
Right.
We talk about that lift station being a known problem for about 10 years, and it's sort of been a Band-Aid fix through the last 10 years. The water infiltration into our sewer treatment plant, I'm hearing that we're averaging about 600,000 gallons out of our water treatment plant daily, but what's showing up in our wastewater treatment plant's about a million, too. So, about twice as much water is showing up that we are treating at our sewer plant than what we are pumping out into the system, which is infiltration coming in. This topic came about because as we look at future plans down the road from our last work session presentation with the extension of the Greenway into Isabella Fertis, it appears that that water infiltration, from what I'm hearing, is, is through that area, basically Bulldog Field area down to our wastewater treatment plant. So, if we've got 600,000 gallons a day infiltration that may even be coming from the spring, who knows where it's coming from, or Hawksville Creek, we don't know. But apparently, this has been something for a long time that's been going on, but it's potentially getting worse. But when we're looking at fixes, before we do, if it comes, improvements through that area that then may have to be demolished or destroyed in the process of fixing what's underground, apparently that's really deep down through there as far as where these sewer mains are running. But from what I hear, if, like, if Wrangler was still here today, our sewer treatment plant couldn't even handle what's going on with this infiltration. Now, for storm, stormwater, we have big storms, that's in addition to what this is. This is, we're treating twice the amount of water, twice the amount of sewer than what we're putting in on the fresh water.
When creek levels get to a certain elevation in Hawksville, we are seeing significant INI through that corridor, all the way from, I would go back as, up as far upstream as the old wastewater treatment plant, you know, park and ride.
Okay.
From there down. That was a difficult installation from what I understand, and there are continual problems there. They've been continually getting worse. It's just like anything.
We did quite a bit of INI work down there not that long ago, didn't we?
We did three different sections. And one of the things we learned is the power of the Hawksville Creek water underground is more powerful than slip lining individual sections or epoxy individual sections. So, really, the only option spelled to us now is to go from manhole to manhole, so that you can seal the entire run all the way into the manhole itself.
So, the fixes we made most recently have failed?
No, no. We, we saw about a 300,000 to 400,000 gallon drop, per day drop in the, the base INI flow. So, I think, I, I'll have to check with some of the more current information, but I think.
Yeah, that's what I just got this week, was about 300,000 on average daily from the water treatment plant, about, I mean, excuse me, 600,000 and about a million, too.
Well, we had been running about a million, too, and then it had dropped down to below a million as our base flow. So, it, it was, we have, we have made improvements to that, reducing the base INI flow.
I'm just, my thing is, while we have ARPA money in this time right now, that this funding is there, and when we see how critical this lift station is, as we, I think all understand it tonight, this other issue, which is even a costly issue as far as the repair, it's not going to get better and only going to cause us trouble down the line, too. So, and especially the connection with any future improvements down through that area, how that could be impacted when a repair is, is like what we have now. It, it's not an option. You know, this has to be done. And at some point, we're going to be at that same issue with that.
Well, our contractor, yeah, our contractor Pleasance Construction gave us a good plan. They told us exactly what they would recommend to do next. And Steve's right, we did see a significant decrease in what we did. Going forward, you know, manholes that don't have individual inlets in them that can be piped directly through would be a great option, and that's one that they recommended. But doing that analysis work in that high-flow environment down there, because that, everything collects into that main. It's an 18S trunkline, and it goes all the way down to wastewater plant. We, we do have a good recommendation, you know, from Pleasance. It's just a matter of, like everything else, Jason, it's time and money. So, I won't go into any of the dark tales that haunt my, all the time. But if you want to come and open up the dark book of dread, I have a whole binder there of things that would make everybody's life a lot better and easier and, and more affordable. But we'll do what we can, and we'll try to prioritize, you know, our, our top ones. And this one and some of the issues down at the water treatment plant, I know that Joey's talked to those about. Those are the, kind of the ones staring us right through the windshield right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, council, what do you want to do?
On the tax rate? Or where are we at right now?
Just advertising.
Yeah.
Well, I'll get it moved.
I mean, I, I'm probably, I, I'm probably more hesitant on the mils and transit oxygen taxes, leaving those the same and going with real estate and cigarette. But if you want to advertise them all and talk about it later, that, that's fine, too.
That's our request, to give you the greater flexibility.
Okay.
I agree. I mean, I think we should move ahead and advertise them all. It gives us flexibility we need to, in the budget preparation.
As I've said before leading up to this, I've gone back and looked at numbers and numbers again. And, you know, last year, our revenues in real estate, personal property, meals tax were the highs that they've been in 10 years. So, our revenues are high. Looking back at all of it, it's our expenditures that are, that are too high. And I look at our general fund budget and our town over the last four to five years, how much we have increased as far as our spending. Yet, I'd have to ask, and I think any citizen would, what, what services or things have we offered that have changed in the last four to five years that we are doing that we didn't do before, yet we've got such an increase in spending that leads us to where we're at today? I mean, what brings us to this tax increase tonight, even if the, even if the last month had not occurred as far as fuel costs, inflation, all the stuff that's staring at us here in the last couple of months, we were still on course for this as far as with the town's spending trend over the last four to five years. It still put us exactly where we are tonight if gas was still 239 a gallon. Now, the lift station, a different situation there, and when we get into asphalt and all of that and look at the future cost of paving, yes, it is a direct impact, but we would have had this discussion anyway. So, it's, as I've said, I'm, the real estate tax revenue we get is the same that it's been, even though the rate's lower. It was equalized due to the increase in the assessments. To raise the rate, yes, that produces more revenue, but, but also more expense to our taxpayers. I'll look at the cigarette tax and the transient occupancy tax as potential. The transient occupancy tax doesn't really affect our locals. That's, it's going to be the tourists that's coming in that's paying that. There's not many locals that are staying in a hotel or lodging here for the night. But the meals tax affects us, affects our locals just as much as the tourists for those that eat out. And the real estate tax is, of course, is only affecting our locals. So, I'm, I'm not for the real estate or the meals tax, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you for entertaining any, excuse my voice a little hoarse, but if we're entertaining any of them, I'd, I'd rather entertain them all, and hopefully we'll have a lot of citizen input over the next month, which I, I suspect we will. I've got a couple of calls. I don't know about if any of you all have, but I'd like for us to look at all of it and just put it out there. I'd like to see none of it pass, frankly, but, you know, let's put it out there and see what the citizens have to say. Drew, you made the motion. Is that correct?
I didn't, but I can.
I thought you did. I'm sorry.
I move the town council authorize the advertisement for public hearings to adjust the FY 22-23 tax rates as 29 cents real estate tax, 5% for meals and beverage tax, 6% for transient occupancy tax, and 20 cents per pack for the cigarette tax. That's for advertising.
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right. I think that's all you have, Steve. Mr. Bach, did you have anything for us?
I don't have any tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Jason. Any council comments?
Does, do they need a decision tonight on the lift station as a priority? Sounds like you want one, though.
Well, we need to evaluate the bid. We need to evaluate where we think the revenue will be. Unfortunately, ARPA would be a good solution, but we've allocated all that we've received. So, until we have a firm date when the federal government will be distributing the next allocation, we, we really don't have enough ARPA money in the bank to, to cover that. So, we are evaluating all of the options to, to present to council in the, in the near future.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Well, I did see the management station. That price hadn't gone up since the last time, has it?
Actually, it's under construction, so the, 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 the amount won't, won't change.
Right.
But Jennifer will be coming back. I know we had talked about doing some landscaping to prevent access to it and some other options. So, not near the, the double price that we experienced with the, the lift station, but that has actually started, and they had set some polls and, and were anticipating that if not by April, at least by the middle of April, it, it will be up and, and being used.
Any other council comments?
It's nice to see so many folks with us tonight, and like seeing the commissioners. There are several of you I've not met, so it's good to see you here. And again, just congratulations to Mr. Lancaster and Mr. Schaefer, and thank you both for your commitment to our community.
Rodney, you want to introduce your commissioners? Thank you.
Sidney Hill-Huffman, Brian Sowers, John Jacob, Wes Miller, and Frank Seeger.
We thank you all for your service to the town. I know it's, it's not always easy. And I think most of us have been on the plane, Commissioner, haven't we? Yeah. But thank you all very much. Okay. I don't really have anything. Wednesday, 10:30, we have the ribbon cutting grand opening for Mend My Mobile, and that's in the Food Lion Shopping Center. I'm not exactly sure where. And then at 10 o'clock Saturday, the, they're planting trees again for the Department of Forestry, if anybody would like to, to join in with that. I'm sure we'll all be down there. I'll, I plan to be there, actually. Okay. All right. Anything, anything else from anybody? Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for being patient this evening. Meeting adjourned.